Good morning. I'll call the commission meeting to order. If I have a secretary, please call the row.
Western Commissioner Johnny Williams.
Present.
Eastern Commissioner Brad Jackson.
Present.
Presiding Commissioner Lynn Morris.
Present. Will you all join me at this place? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and indivisible liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. All right. We've got some important items today. First thing we have approved of today's agenda, we have no meeting minutes, Ms. Matty has called up, and we have no financials. We're going to do one order today as in sequence of other items for consideration. We will be taking out the report from the Aggro Ready County Group. It's kind of like a Farm Bureau group to work with farmers and it's supposed to be no cost. They are going to come and talk to us and they, one of the gentlemen that called me yesterday could not be here today. So they'll reschedule. Everything else will stay on schedule. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda statement.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
We got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. So we are good to go. First item on the agenda is Ms. Paula talking about the tax levy being.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right. I'm here that we need to set our tax levy. I sent the performance to everybody, I think last week. I'm not quite sure. I do have the ones that I need signing. We did have an update on the rollback information that I just gave you guys. It's also out on the website. Other than that, that's all I can tell you.
Okay. Very good. I appreciate that. This is something, this is something that we do thank goodness only once a year. And so it's something that we're not all accustomed to, all the calculations and the way you calculate things. And when we first looked at it, we had a, the current levy, the levy that we're operating off of now, 2025. And we also, that was the same levy as we had in 2024 because we didn't, we didn't increase our levy from 24 to 25. And it looked like, to begin with, when I first looked at it about a week ago, that there was only about eighteen thousand, slightly under eighteen thousand dollars worth of difference if we had raised that levy just a little bit. And, you know, in my opinion, I think probably in the commissioner's opinion, that might probably not be enough to warrant. No, no one likes taxes, but taxes are essential. We can't do without taxes. And so we try to keep our levies down and not raise them unless we have to. Now we have a situation that we have to think about and discuss. The correct number is, makes a difference. So the correct number is oh five six oh instead of, instead of a number of oh four four five. That makes a considerable difference. So instead of eighteen thousand dollars difference, it makes a difference of a quarter million dollars. It's two hundred and forty-nine thousand something. So we'll round that to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that number, looking at the county budget, that, that would take care of a fifteen percent increase in our premiums for our healthcare for employees this year. That kind of shows you the magnitude, even though that number would not impact families to where they really probably would even notice a tax increase. But it would be more important to the county because we would be able to actually use that money to do something. Or to use something else in the budget because sales tax has been flat this year. Sales tax is absolutely flat this year after seven months. So we have to figure that things out. So I'm going to open up to discussion, see what you all are thinking. I don't know what you're thinking. So, Commissioner Jackson, you, you've been here before with us on the tax levy. So what do you, what are you thinking?
Well, I think that just for transparency issues, anybody that happens to be watching this and somewhat knowledgeable about the way government works and the Hancock Amendment, they assume that tax levies wouldn't go up, they would go down, but we have a different system here. And maybe a little explanation would be helpful that since we're primarily derive our income through sales tax, if the sales tax levy or sales tax contribution coming into the coffers is not great enough, then it could cause the property tax levy to go up and help offset, compensate that shortfall. And that's what we're discussing here today is the potential of raising the levy for next year to offset the, the loss of sales tax revenue. You know, I'm not a, I'm not a fan of mandated taxes. And that's what I look at property taxes. It's a mandated tax that's, that's kind of set in stone. I guess you could be elective and not own anything, but even if you rent somewhere, whoever you're renting from is paying the property tax. So it's just kind of being put on us. And I, I like the model of sales tax much better because now you're electively paying taxes every time you purchase something. And if you don't want to pay taxes, you just don't buy stuff. I think we know that there is a huge problem that's setting right on the cusp of all of our issues. And that's proximity we are to a big metropolitan area that has a lot of things that we would like to do and places where we can go buy and people escape our, our county to go do that. Or they utilize the internet to do that. And that's what's causing our woes. How do we, how do we work on that? I think we've been trying for the past couple of years to encourage that sales tax purchases inside of our county to help offset these growing costs that we have. But I am not a fan of, of raising the levy. I understand the difference of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars spread across the entire county is, is not very much to each individual that is raising their taxes. At the same time, I can wish and want and hope and pray that people are going to shop in brick and mortar stores in our county. And it doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to do it. But I don't, it's a tough decision. I understand that, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars could offset expenses that were, were incurring regularly inside our county. Our sales tax is, is flat. So I, you know, I guess I'm having a hard time swallowing it, you know, and these numbers are different than what was originally proposed to us a couple of days ago. So I haven't had as much opportunity to kind of swallow that, that larger number. But still, I would be inclined to kind of keep the status quo. I have made a motion the past two years to leave the, the property tax levy flat. And I would be inclined to do that again. But then I maybe looked on this, the guy that refuses to, you know, make sure we get our bills paid. And I don't really want to be that guy either. And that's, that's really, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to make a decision here in my head where I want to go with this.
No, I appreciate all your comments. And I actually agree with everything that you're saying. Commissioner Williams, what are you thinking? You're new here.
Yeah. And this is my first year diving into this. So I've had to ask a lot of questions and, and understanding. And I have, I have a lot of the same feelings and sentiments that Mr. Jackson does. You know, and understanding is people, the sales tax portion is nice because as people pay for the sales tax, you know, they're, they're voluntarily paying those. Where when you're raising something, you know, you're, you're taxing people and it's something that we, we never want to have to do. And I've dove into the numbers, you know, big earlier in the year and just understanding how flat I've been watching monthly, how flat, you know, the taxes coming in have been and trying to understand. And we know, you know, in looking at that, there has to be a major change in the future in order for us to be able to continue with the amount of growth that the county's having. I'm hoping to show good faith in working on a plan. The timing isn't the best with voting on this tax, but to possibly show good faith to people and showing that we're not just raising, you know, the levies and the taxes for people just, you know, because we can. And we're looking at other avenues to do that fairly and having that. And that's obviously something we can't discuss now because we don't have everything in place for that. But so, I'm exactly with him. It's, it's, it's something we understand we're going to need. But how do we, how do we go at that angle to do that, but then still show good faith as we move forward with other plans of doing that? So I'm more inclined personally to looking at it as, as keeping the levy flat and showing good faith and trying to put forth a different plan to generate that revenue without just raising people's taxes.
Okay. So, so just for the people that's in the room, but especially for the people online. I mean, one of the things that, that we have learned is that, and a lot of people have misconceptions because property tax is the biggest tax that people pay every year. And I understand that. And, and for, for us in the county, sales tax is about seventy-five percent of our total budget is sales tax. And sales tax is declining, even though our population's increasing, sales tax is declining. Services are increasing because as you increase people, citizens, then you increase the amount of services that need to be provided. And it's not going to stop. This population is going to continue to grow. We're near one hundred thousand. Next year we'll be over a hundred thousand. It changes the, the, the way the county's going to operate because we have, we changed the level of a first-class county. We're going to have another judge. We're going to have more expenses and come on in here. And so we're going to have, so we're going to have even more expenses in the next year or two as we change the levels of first-class county. For everyone that's watching online and, and, and in this room, Commissioner Williams is correct. I, I'm hoping, I'm actually hoping and praying that people will have some trust in the commission and the county officers, elected officials, because we are working on a plan. We are working on a plan. It's not going to be feasible to depend on sales tax the way it is today. We have more and more people buying online every year. And, and we also don't have enough jobs here in this county, although we're working on it. Show me Christian County, everyone's working on it. But that's going to take more years to develop. So we don't have the jobs to keep people here. And wherever they work is where they shop. So, so, so that's, that's a problem. For whatever plan that we decide to do and announce, hopefully maybe before the end of this year, won't really show benefits for at least a year. I use NIXA as example because, because Jimmy Lyles, the city manager over in NIXA, Ms. Sandy's here, the veteran part of that group, that duo. And, you know, they, they've been doing that, what, four years or five years over their, the use tax?
Since 2021.
Use tax. So just using the use tax as an example, that's another thing you could do. Now that's a tax. And people will go, wow, I don't want a tax. I don't like taxes. Well, that's, that's something else to consider. I'll just use them as an example. They thought outside the box and their use tax has increased thirteen, about thirteen percent a year, every year since they started that. And they're making, what, two or three million dollars now that they're bringing in? Sort of something like that. So, so that's a, you know, that's something that, we need to think outside the box. We're not going to, we're not going to have the services we need to provide in the future. I'm not saying it's going to stop tomorrow. Not going to stop in 26. But it's going to start slowing down if we don't come up with a better solution. We've got to come up with a better solution because sales tax is not going to get it. Okay? And, and for, most people don't understand this because I see people all the time over at the collector's office coming back over here and talking to us that they want to talk to us, they want to talk to me and complain about their taxes. I listen. And they don't understand that the county only gets about eleven dollars out of every thousand dollars that's paid. And so we can't depend on sales, on property tax either. So that's not what we're doing. Brandon, did you hear something?
Okay. So, but anyway. Well, I'd be more happy to go ahead and put this topic to rest if you don't mind. I'll make a motion that we leave the property tax levy flat for this next year.
Second.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
That's just the general revenue. We've got.
Oh, yeah. Okay. So, so we need to talk about Commission one and two.
I'd make a motion to leave Common one flat as well.
Okay.
Can you see the grade now?
I don't have it in front of me.
Let me see if it's on here.
So.
So I'll just make the motion to leave Common, Common one to be the same rate as the previous year. You can insert that number.
Thank you.
A second.
Okay. We got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Then I'll make a motion for C2 to remain the same as it was last year as well, which is.
Okay. So we've got a motion for.
A second, sorry.
Okay. And we got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
I will have you sign these after the meeting. I'll go get that grade.
Yeah. And we can sign those now if you want to.
And I'll go get the grade.
Okay. All right. Very good. Okay. Thank you, guys. Okay. Next item on the agenda is discount purchasing. We're talking about a motor vehicle for the commission and for other elected officials.
I feel like I keep getting shorter and shorter.
We'll blame the chair.
You squall. Yeah. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So you tasked me to start looking for a new vehicle for the county. And so I want to preface this by, for the past two years, I have taken a lot of vehicles that were very old and that were not being used and probably should have sold them years before last year. But we sold four vehicles last year. I don't have the totals in front of me, but I want to let you know that we've done that. In my opinion, the commission has not had a reliable vehicle since I've been here. And so what's happening is all of the elected officials, you all included, the auditor, the treasurer, the assessor, I mean, not the assessor because he has, they have a vehicle. But all of, most of the elected officials are using their own cars to go to mandatory training in Jeff City or wherever it may take them. And so they've always taken their own vehicles and then turned their mileage. So we're, we're still paying in one shape or another. So when I did this, I was, I actually kind of asked around what other counties, cities they were buying. And so I kind of did a compilation of what other counties are doing or what other entities are doing. And so when I did this, we're using the State of Missouri contract. And on the State of Missouri contract, there are eleven dealerships in the state. They're called qualified vendor lists. And those are the only vendors that are to be used with the state. And so I came up with, with your blessing, the following items that I had bid out in those eleven. One was an Equinox, Chevy Equinox. That is considered a compact SUV. Then we went to midsize SUVs. We went to a Blazer, an Explorer, and a Grand Cherokee, a Jeep Grand Cherokee. So, and those are all more on the midsize. I know that we also talked about, do we want a truck or do we want a, an SUV? And so in looking at all of this, I just want to present this to you. You all decide what you want. But this is what we got. And then I'll go back to my notes. So we did the invitation to bid to the eleven vendors. We received bids from the following. We received bids from Corwin Ford, which is in Republic. And we received a bid from Corwin Jeep, which is in Springfield. These are the two vehicles that are currently in stock. They are 2025 vehicles and ready to go. We received bids from Don Brown Chevrolet for an Equinox and a Blazer for 2026. As I listed on the bid tab, they are estimated for the Equinox and the Blazer, three plus months. But they would be 2026 versus a 2025. And then I also received bids from Joe Mottens, I'm not sure how to pronounce that, Mottens, Mottens?
Mottens.
Ford, for the Explorer. It's a 2026. They put in their bid, four plus months, subject to manufacturer delay. So who knows? And again, we all know that we, the supply chain that we had several years ago has diminished, but it's still, it's still there with new vehicles. So again, I'm not trying to sway you one way or another. But just know that Corwin is local. They would warranty when you pay for maintenance there, local. So with all that said, I'm going to let you look at those prices. And then you all decide if you want to go to the sub with the Equinox or if you want to look more at the midsize, which in Jeep or Blazer would, would be more of your truck and SUV together, if that's what you want. So I'm just going to leave that up to you and you decide what you want me to go for.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for all that work. Let's throw out comments, questions. You all check this, look at this.
I, I looked at it, but I'm not, I'm trying to get the, the website attachments to upload right now on my iPad. So I can't, I don't have, I don't have a, did you give me a copy of this?
I was going to say, there's one here if you need it. Go pass it to me. I've got it on my computer too.
I see it now. Sorry. I like to try to.
When I was looking through the list, really the only thing that I see, the Equinox is a little bit smaller. If we have to take speakers or IT or whoever's going to use, possibly if you had a couple of people with luggage going to training or something, that is the smaller compact for bigger people getting in and out. So really I, I really don't have a preference outside of that. I think you need to be more in that midsize than the compact. I think that'll help with that. But outside of that, in my mind, with the other options, pricing's pretty similar. Maybe even what, maybe even what your opinion is, maybe even resale, what might help or things like that. Because outside of that, I don't really have a huge preference.
You made a big point. And I wish I had the numbers in front of me. But I do know that two of those four cars that we sold last year were Jeeps. And it was amazing. One was like a 2014, one was a, I want to say 2017. Again, don't have the numbers right in front of me, but I was, we were all amazed at how much money we made off those used vehicles. And so.
Well, one of the things that Ms. Kim and I have talked about, you know, leather seats are more expensive than cloth seats. However, leather seats have a lot more durability. And when you're talking about resale and you're going to trade a car in and buy a new car five, six years from now, you're going to get more money on a leather seat car than, than a cloth seat. And then I think cloth seats, we're going to have several different people drive this car. It could be the commissioners. It could be elected officials in this building. You're going to have all these different people. And I just think it'd be better to, to spend an extra couple of thousand dollars and get leather. On the other hand, about size of car, I'm, I'm just really not wanting anything but a midsize SUV, mostly for safety. Mostly, I don't want to send the, the men out there driving to Lake of the Ozarks or Jefferson City or wherever they're going, or the women, the other elected officials in this building and, and have a wreck in a small car. I don't want that. And, and so I will sacrifice a little bit of mileage, gasoline costs to, to keep people safer. And so that's my opinion. I really like, because I asked you the color, because color makes a little difference to me. I'm not sure what the gentleman thinks, but the car, the color for the Ford Explorer is almost a white color.
It's called a pale white, yes.
Yeah.
The one from Corwin.
Pale gray. I'm sorry, pale gray.
The one from Corwin.
Corwin. Yes. And it's a beautiful color. The Jeep, I like Jeeps because I drive a Jeep. And we have Jeeps in this fleet of cars for the county. They've been good cars, but, but I think it's burgundy color. I'm not really, myself is not really sold on the burgundy color for, for a county car. I want to make sure we have our emblems in our cars marked where people can see that that's a county car out there doing business and stuff like that. So I guess that's my comments. And now we've kind of filibustered enough time to see what Commissioner Jackson.
I also wanted to throw out there that if you look between Joe Mottens and Corwin, Joe Mottens, again, is a 2026, but four plus months. Corwin Ford is almost, for the 2025, brand new, is almost two thousand dollars cheaper.
Yeah. I like the price point.
Not to mention that delivery cost and some.
Oh, yeah. There's no delivery, yeah, exactly. There's no delivery cost. That added another two hundred dollars for, for the Joe Mottens, yes.
And for, you know, for taxpayers, everyone that's watching online or here in the, in the room. I mean, we've already gone over our budget in the first six months with mileage expense because we haven't had, this is the first time since 20, when I got here in the commission, first time that we haven't had a county car for commissioners and other elected officials. So, so this year, since January 1st, we have been using our own vehicles. And, and that's fine, except you're going to pay for it one way or the other. The other thing that I want to brag about you, that people need to know, not only did we sell cars that we didn't need, we also found cars in different departments of our county and gave them to other departments that needed it. That is extremely important because Ms. Tuie with the prosecuting attorney's office, they use a car. They've got lawyers going out on cases in more than one place. They don't just have all their cases right here in Christian County. And so they were always using our car. And sometimes they needed a second car. And you found them cars. We found them cars in the county that we could take from that group and give to another group and not hurt that group and help this group. So we've done some pretty important things.
Yeah. Before we sell a car, we always give first right refusal to other departments.
Right. Right. So, so what do you gentlemen feel? And I'd rather buy a car now than to wait three or four months. But it's, what, it's up to you. What, Commissioner Jackson, what do you think?
Well, I mean, I think if we're going to, we're going to be worried about the, the safety of a vehicle in an accident, maybe we should review consumer reports, reviews to see what one has the best ratings versus just saying that a bigger one is better than a smaller one. Because I think there's a lot of smaller vehicles that can stand up to accidents well based off their airbags and how they're built. Color, I'm not as concerned about. Preferably, I think a white vehicle would, would match the rest of the fleet that we have and ties into what most counties and municipalities. into what most counties and municipalities would use. Leather seats, I don't like them. I've never purchased a vehicle with leather seats and I wouldn't just because I don't like the, the cloth fabrics cooler to me. Size of the vehicle, I think an Equinox is fine. I would be fine with a Trailblazer as I own one and I drive it and I'm the biggest guy there is probably in the building.
Are you getting one of them?
And I can pull myself into it and I'm comfortable. So I, I want to make sure that we have a reliable vehicle that we can send people to wherever confidently knowing that they're going to get there and back in a, in a vehicle that won't break down. That it is utilitarian enough to haul any small equipment we might need to from point A to point B, whether it be IT using it to move stuff or, you know, any one of the elected officials maybe moving stuff from this building to another building or storage or whatever. And it'd be a passenger rated vehicle so that people can double up, you know, three or four people in the vehicle. Other than that, I really don't have a whole lot of preference. I would like to save the taxpayers money by not going out and spending more than what is needed. Yeah, I mean, if I had my brothers, I guess I would rather have a Cadillac Escalade, you know, but that's not needed.
We didn't put that on the list here for you.
Yeah, that's, that's not needed. If I'm spending my money, it's one thing and when I'm spending someone else's money, it's a completely totally separate thing. And in the process of trying to be a good steward to the taxpayers by not raising the tax levy when we could, it really would seem bad for me to turn around and spend extra money on a vehicle that I don't need to spend. So I would prefer just to go in at the lesser amount. We know that the vehicle is going to be safe, we know that it has a warranty and it's covered. And I think that speaks volumes to the taxpayers that, hey, we're trying to help you out by not raising your taxes and we're not wasting your money by buying something that we don't necessarily need to have.
Part of that's the need in the size. I mean, we could go buy a little Chevy Sonic, a little bitty car, I mean, and spin next thing.
Those I do have a little hard time getting into.
I think it's just more about the functionality. I'm with you, I don't want to spend any more than we have to, it's just making sure we get something. One, you do got to pay a little bit attention to the resale, that helps us, cause at some point it'll rotate out. And two, making sure that it doesn't do us any good to buy a vehicle and then go, well, this doesn't really fit the need from different places. So it's really, I mean, not that we want to spend any more money than we have to, but it needs to, it needs to fit the need, so.
And to me, I was looking, but I didn't see on the Equinox, is that the one that's not available right now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Nothing is available right now except local, the Explorer.
And that's a 20, that's a 26, so you're waiting on it. They didn't have any 25s. Now, if we were to choose to not use the state bid and just go to a local dealer, where, what are we looking at with regards to that?
Of course we can do that. We're not getting any sales tax off of that, so there's not a whole lot of, I mean, I can still go to, I can still go to a Chevy, Chevy dealer that's local, but we've really already gone to a Springfield, Republic, local. So whatever you want me to do, I'll, I'll be happy to do.
Yeah, I just, I'm just trying to look at, you know, I mean, we could wait three months, but it'd be best.
And we don't know if that's going to be three months.
No, and yeah, and we don't know. I do know that there's three, three different dealerships here inside the county that are not part of the state bid process. Don't know what their prices would be comparatively to the state bid pricing.
In your experience, do you normally, are the state bids normally better than what you can find out there or is it?
Well, they've negotiated all of this and there's going to be a certain price over invoice. And here's the other thing, I did send this to a local dealer that did not bid. So, I mean, M route is part of the state contract and they did not bid so at all. And so, I mean, I, it's not that I didn't try to do that. And again, I also think, really think about maintenance. And when you have something local, and I agree with you, if we could go local, it's still local, but out of all of this, again, you have a need now, you haven't had this vehicle for a while. People are still using their own cars.
Sure.
To go back and forth on company business and you have two good vehicles right there that you can get maintenance local. So I don't know, I don't even know if our local can even match these prices. I mean, I can always do that, but I really don't think they could probably match these prices.
Yeah, they may not be able to. I, I, I don't know, I just, I wonder, you know, just glancing online, you know, looking at some of the local dealerships, I, I, I don't know, I'm not comparing apples to apples, you know? I'm not typing in a 2026 Equinox, I was looking at a 25.
Well, I put 20, I put on our, all of it to them that we were requesting 2025. They chose, those other dealerships chose to give me 2026, which means they didn't have it on their lot. So for us to even have something that's on the lot, and I do know that the, I bought bids for city utilities, I mean, I bought cars, trucks for city utilities. So this is not my first rodeo with state contracts, but what we would do is we just bid them out because technically it's not a state entity. And so I have dealt with this Corwin Ford dealership for many, many years and Steve Forster has probably done business in government for 30 years. So he's going to give us, in my opinion, the best bottom dock we can get because this is what he does every day for Southwest Missouri, so.
And we know we get it now, those are the only two options because we don't know, it could be six months or a year.
It could be after Christmas.
Yeah, sure, sure.
Easily, and so, and then, you know, are they going to cancel it? Are they going to honor it?
Sure.
Do we have to do that again like they did several years ago when we were going through this with cars? So again, I will do whatever you all want, I just.
Let me make a couple more comments, cause I, I think it's very important. I mean, we, we always talk about buying local. It's important because of sales tax. In this particular case, I want to make sure everybody understands, there is no sales tax. The county is tax exempt. We're not going to pay sales tax. So this county's not going to lose sales tax. If I thought that I was going to lose sales tax, I would be not allowing this to happen. I would, I'd say we got to buy it local, okay? But we don't have to. When you look at, and I understand why Commissioner Jackson, he doesn't like leather, but let me tell you something. We know the trade in is better on leather, it's $270 difference. It's pretty amazing to me. A Jeep just costs more money, cause I drive Jeeps. They cost more money than Fords, okay, this Ford Explorer. But this Ford Explorer with leather is only $270 more than the bid with cloth on the Jeep. And so I, I hope that if we.
It's not leather.
Well, you're, you're comparing a Jeep to a Ford though.
Well, I mean.
As far as an in-stock item.
Right, right. But I mean, that's, that's the two that is in stock now, so that's what I'm comparing it. We can get, every brand's going to be different. And I, I, I guess I'm going to be like you. You don't like leather, I don't like Equinoxes, so, so.
And I think that's a challenge that we're going to have.
I wonder who's going to be the deciding factor in this thing, so.
I think that's a challenge that you're going to have when you, when you, when you have three people with three different backgrounds and experiences and trying to make a decision on something. There are going to be certain things that you have a preference of this, I have a preference of this, Commissioner Williams has a preference of something else. And trying to hone us all in to, come into an agreement on something could, could be challenging.
Now, if we, if we get, cause you've talked about, Commissioner Jackson, you've talked about needing a truck in the 26 budget that we're working on today and now, and if that serves a little different type of purpose than, than this vehicle, that I want to make sure that women are comfortable in driving as well as, as men, elected officials, then we, you know, we've got other options, so it kind of gives you a little bit more variety of what we perceive that we're going to need in some of the roads that Miranda takes care of in the county compared to the dirt roads, the gravel roads, the roads that are in pretty bad shape. We might want to drive a truck instead of a, instead of a SUV. But, but I mean, so we, we are going to have other options that we're going to need. I think it boils down to, we've got two cars available now. Do you like one over the other or you don't like either one? You pass and now we, we go to 26. We look at the ones that are coming in in three or four months, maybe that gives us time to find something else that you like better. I mean, that's your decisions you need to make. We can either buy one now because we've gone without, we've gone almost a year without a car, so.
So what I'm understanding is we're narrowing it down to the two Corwin vehicles, cause that's what's available? Is that, are you both in agreeance that's what we're talking about here or we're taking?
I would rather talk about that.
Well, I, I think just doing due diligence, I would like to look at the three local dealerships to see if they have anything that is in stock that would meet our, our specs, just, just to see if they're better priced than the bid. I'm looking at a couple of things, you know, here online, but, and when I say shopping local, I, I totally understand that we don't pay sales tax, but when you shop local, whether you pay sales tax or not, let's say you're, you're going to get a haircut and you can go get your haircut in Springfield, you can get your haircut in Ozark, you get your haircut in Ozark, you're part of the system, you're paying into the system, you're supporting local businesses that are paying property taxes, you're supporting businesses that have employees that are inside our community that are spending money. So shopping local is not just about sales tax, it's about the whole big picture. And so, you know, I think if we could do just a little bit of due diligence, I'm not saying spend hours and hours and hours of time, but three phone calls and I'd be more than happy to assist in that, to see if there's something that meets our needs that's local, that's in stock, that maybe is less expensive than $40,000, that it still hits all of our, you know, it's big enough for, for all of us or whatever our needs are to haul everything.
We have a little bit of time.
I, I think that that would be a prudent thing to do.
Sure, sure. Whatever you all want to do. I, I can't make phone calls, I will have to do it as a bid because it's of the dollar amount.
Sure.
I will have to advertise it because of the dollar amount. It will have to be out there for at least two weeks as I advertise it. If anything over $12,000 by statute has to be advertised into newspapers and, and so, and I like to have it at least a week or two.
We'll have two weeks. These, these cars won't be there, but that, that's fine. That's fine. And I would just say this, I have no problem. In fact, I would encourage us to always look locals, but, but here's the deal, maybe we should have told the purchasing agent that, hey, you go call these people, you can't call, get the bid, get the bid for those people too, because, because now you're going to lose these two.
Right.
And when you start talking about a truck for this budget for 2026 that we're going to turn in by September 1st, I'm not a big, I, I've always driven trucks, but I don't even know if this county needs a truck, so, so that's a, if you're talking about saving 40, $2,000 trying to find a $37,000, $38,000 car, then, and you're passing on a Ford Explorer that with leather that, that we know is a good car, then, then I, I'm going to have trouble with you trying to sell me a truck to put on the 2026 budget. So, so a little, I'm a little disappointed that, that we weren't better prepared for, for this. That is the way I feel, but you've done a lot of work.
We won't have two weeks to get that back in order to make it to budget time, am I correct?
Well, this will be spending money out of this budget.
Yeah, we, I've already budgeted this money. This money, we already have the money to buy this car.
And we already sold four vehicles in the past year, so that money's.
Yeah, and we have that money set aside in another account and so we have the money, the county has the money. And so we can continue to, I, I don't use a company, a county vehicle anyway. I don't mind using my own car and I don't charge for mileage going around different places.
Ms. Dent, is that correct? We don't have the two weeks to get that timeframe budget wise?
We have until the end of the year to use that money for purchase.
I see.
But the sooner you get a vehicle out here, the sooner we can stop paying mileage.
So with your recommendation, you feel like we need to gas pedal down and get?
If you're going to act, please act.
Okay. We want to discuss these two vehicles again or do you, you want your time? What do you want, what do you want to do?
You know, I, I think this process has, has gone on for quite some time. Appreciate all your efforts. It's, it's gone honestly further or it's grown past where I was hoping that we were going. We've had, I know you and I had conversations where, you know, I know, I would be perfectly content with the Trailblazer, which is MSRP at under $30,000. I think it would serve all of our needs. We didn't ask for that and the bid specs, even though we had those conversations. I think that shows good faith to the taxpayers versus going out and this is better than, you know, the option that was shown to us the other day, which I think definitely was exceeded our needs. It was a nice vehicle, it was a wonderful vehicle, but it exceeded our needs for, for moving personnel from training to training and so forth. If, if you guys want to make a decision, I'll support your decision. It's, it's gone past where I thought we needed to go cost wise and.
No, I get that and I do, the only reason I'm, I'm more apt on the dollar figures because it is sold vehicles that we did. This isn't new money coming in, this is something we're exchanging to get something quality for people. So that, that part of it makes me feel, so, I mean, I'm fine with making a motion to, to purchase the 2025 Ford Explorer, white with leather for, as Mr. Morris would like, cause the $200 difference in the other vehicle, we have the option, so.
Okay, so we've got a motion.
I will, so that it can get to a vote, I'll second the motion.
Okay, we've got a motion, appreciate that. I got, we got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
I am a no.
Oh, just sorry.
That's all right.
Sorry, we got two to one vote.
Worth more, thanks.
So was that, so that's the Corwin Ford at a Republic for the 26 Explorer?
2025.
2025, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And great discussion, everyone, both commissioners, great discussion. That's the way it should be, okay? All right, next item on the agenda, we're going to postpone, as I stated, the Agora County Red Discussion. They're going to be coming at a later date soon to discuss a program that's not a costly county, but recommended and supported by Farm Bureau, another great organization that helps our farmers in, in Christian County. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Commission Report on Senate Bill 190, Senate Bill 756, and the Collector is, is out this week and the Assessor is not here right now, so I'm going to kind of lead this discussion just a little bit. We, we all have a copy of the new order. There has been just a few changes before I go over that. I want to kind of give an update that I received yesterday so the, all the citizens can hear We had 4,121 renewals sent out, 4,121 renewals sent out. There was 16 that were rejected due to be, either they moved or they deceased, something in that order. There probably was a few more than 16 that could have died, but that's what we have as on our record and we have 49 that did not renew. Now, we all know that we made lots of phone calls. We also know that the Collector's Office made, sent several notices out. We had ads and articles in the newspapers and on TV and everything else. We did our best to get everyone that had applied and already been accepted to renew. We ended up with a 99% renewal rate. I've had citizens that have told me that this would be a failure if we didn't have 100%. If we didn't have 100%, it would be really great because that meant that no one died, no one moved out of their house into a nursing home, no one moved into their kid's home and no one moved out of state to live close to their kids in another state, like one of our former mayors. of our former mayors did, he moved out of Ozark, and he was on the program last year. So there's, so 99% is a great number, and I just want to give kudos to the Clerk's office, the Assessor's office, the Clerk's office, because they did the bulk of the work this past year. The county did our due diligence, and we're doing our due diligence with a change in the order, because we've made several order changes over time, but the, the main thing is, I just want people to know that, that if it hadn't have been for all these different departments, and not just the elected officials, but their staff, this program, we had to get new software, we, we've had to do a lot of expense that the county has spent to make this program work. The good news is, the group that I just mentioned, the different office holders, meet with me, and we have our little coffee club meeting, and we've made changes recommended in this order. The most important change is the fact that we know notary required for renewals starting in 2026. That's the most important thing, and I think we've mastered what we need to watch out for, and, and we will continue to require notarization for new applications only, but that's going to help a lot. And we're continuing to work on software enhancements that we'll, we will be paying for, and continuing to get better at what we do to serve the seniors, but I think that program has been a really good success. New applications for this year was 2,731, 2,731 new people, and out of that group, 2,632 was accepted, so not everybody that applies, that could be because they don't understand the age requirement. Most of the trust issues have gone away. We now know how to, to take care of old trusts, they're legal documents, but they don't conform to what Senate Bill 190 and 756 said, so we had to have some new, new help and, and new ways to get the, the old trust updated to where they could still keep it the way they wanted for their family inheritance, and it'd still be legal to fit 756 in 756. So, anyway, I, I think those are great numbers. That gives us a total of 6,698 seniors took advantage of this program, 6,000, almost 7,000 people took advantage of this program. That's a substantial number, but it's not a number that hurt the school system. The school system is still fine, all the tax entities are fine, and will continue to do that. There are a couple other minor changes that was made, and it's mostly just wording, the way they did the wording, and that this was mostly the Collector and the Assessor, they have their own associations, they talk to many assessors and collectors, and, and these were suggestions that, that were made, and we can do, any discussion or comments on the order? Just two pages.
Yeah, just one thing, I guess, I've, I've received a phone call yesterday from a concerned citizen that saw this listed on the agenda, but there's no attachment on the website that would have stated out all of the language here in the revision, and I plan to bring this up during commission comments, and I, and I guess I will again, but I just want to try to make sure that every single thing that we have to make a decision upon is submitted to the Clerk in time to be put on the website, so that our citizens are working on transparency, and there's no better way of, you know, continuing that transparency than giving anybody that's interested or concerned in topics the ability to review what we're reviewing before we start talking about it, so. I would really, really try to continue that effort, I know there's quite a few things listed in the attachment, I'm still trying to get it uploaded here, for some reason, my device does not want to connect very fast, but I think it would, it would benefit us greatly if, if people that are interested in what we're talking about could see it for themselves and ask questions, or, or maybe they wouldn't even need to ask a question, because they'd be able to read through and see those things. I, I appreciate the fact that it states in here that we will not be doing notaries on anything in renewals, because that's what I had envisioned we would do in year one when we started this process, and I think it's a great step to make it a little bit easier for all of our seniors. When we were doing the phone calls, I ran into that a lot, they were trying to find a ride to take them to the bank, or take them to the courthouse to do that, and had our, had our process been a little bit easier for them, I think it, it wouldn't have gotten to the last couple of weeks trying to make frantic phone calls to, to get some of those people in, and I appreciate all the work that the Assessor and Collector's office have done through this, and I appreciate the fact that they have continued to work to make this better for, for our citizens, but if we can continue as the commission to get information out to everybody before we have a topic on the agenda, I, I think it would, would help out.
Well, I'll tell you, I'll tell you that, Commissioner Jackson, I absolutely 110% agree with you, I just want to point out to the citizens that this office is probably the only office I've ever worked in my life that have not had an administrative assistant for eight months now, and so, I'm probably not the best secretary, I'm probably not the best assistant, and probably I'm not the best presiding commissioner, I do absolutely agree with you, but I maybe could use some extra help every once in a while, and so, I would apologize when things don't get sent to out there, because I think it's extremely important that everything that we discuss is seen by the public, because you and I are the ones, I did it two years in a row and got voted down twice, two years in a row, of being transparent and having these meetings on YouTube, that's why we're going to have a newsletter, and something that I've not seen before in the commission, starting in January, now that we've got an administrative assistant hired. So I agree with you, I don't disagree with you at all, but I want to make it clear that we understand what we need to do, sometimes we don't have the manpower, or the assistance to get it done. And then I would disagree a little bit with you on, on the notary, because I'm going to stand behind the elected officials, that, because they were doing the work, not you and me, and not Commissioner Williams, they, they were doing the work every day, seeing those people, and there was reasons, legitimate reasons, we don't have 30 minutes to go into all the things that we've seen and learned and discovered, but we are, this county is much better off today, and now we don't have to do it anymore, because we're going to watch it, and, and we know what to do, and, and we want to make it as easy as possible for every citizen to continue to participate, and I'm still, and I know you all too, very proud that we have 99% participation, you can't get much better than that, so I, I still stand by the record of what we've all decided to do, and going forward, we're going to continue to serve the people, that's, that's what we've got. So any other comments or questions? All right, we need to make a motion to, yes, yes?
Before you go into closed session, we need to correct the C1 tax levy motion. You wanted it to be the same as last year, actually, it needs to be lower than what is recommended, so.
We're perfect.
We just noticed that, so.
I like that.
If we're going to close session, can we?
We have to, we still have to.
Yeah, we've got to finish this, this piece here, and then we can go back.
Okay, good, I'm glad, I'm glad you brought that up, okay? Thank you, so, so I need a motion to approve the new order as stated today, changes in it.
So moved.
Okay, we got a motion?
Second.
We got a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, we, we can, we can correct that, and that actually will lower the levy?
Yes.
Okay.
What is that new rate?
The new rate, the maximum new rate is .0932.
Okay.
Last year's was .0948.
Okay, and then, Commissioner, you want to make a motion on that?
I'm more than happy to lower our citizens' taxes, so I would make the motion to establish the new rate at .0932, down from .0948 for Common 1 Road District.
Perfect, we got a motion to lower, and we got a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's, it's passed.
Thank you for double checking, man, I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you, we could have done that later, I guess, but that's good, now we did that. Okay, so we are now going to go into closed session, auditors' communication. Thanks, everybody, for being here today.